Meeting the order at six o'clock. This is a meeting of the Cleveland zoning commission. And the first order is to have the pledge and invocation. We'll do the pledge first, and then the front will lead us in the invocation. If you would, please stand. Do the American flag first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a sovereign justice on our side.
And the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. Our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Good Lord, we just come before you tonight and just thank you for this wonderful day. We just ask for your blessings and protection on everyone in this meeting. We ask for your wisdom and guidance to be with us tonight in your name. Amen.
All right. All right, we will now open the public hearing. The first item on the agenda is public hearing on an application for specific use permit for South Cleveland Water to build a water plant to expand the service capacity of the CCN 12566 at the following location. Six acres to be surveyed out of 00209 Seahawper Survey Park of tract 199-573 acre 16.5. And number two is, well, we'll just stop at number one and invite is the public for any comments. Does anyone have any comments or questions about number one? Anyone here for number one? If not, we'll move on.
Who? I'm asking, does anyone want to line?
Oh, no, no ma'am.
There's only you and her. Is there no representatives from South Cleveland? We need to discuss that.
Well, no, I think once we get to the action item, I can give a brief introduction as to why we're doing this.
Okay, we need to move on to number two. That is, public hearing on potential amendment to the city's comprehensive plan and approving modified setbacks for non-conforming lots. Do I need to read that?
No, that's.
Well, there's nothing to read. Okay. So, do we have anyone here that has a comment on number two? You look like you won't say so.
This is from Glen Park thing, is it correct?
Sir?
Or Glen Park?
They would qualify, yes.
Okay. Yes, we're here for that, just to hear what's going on.
Oh, okay. Would you like to make any comments?
What is your name first, please?
My name is Brian Gossel.
What's the last name?
Gossel.
Gossel?
Yes, sir.
Brian Gossel. All right. If you would like to stand up, we'd be glad to hear your comment.
Well, we were, just started building out here in the Glen Park area, and we went in for permitting, and we're trying to develop our properties. And we have 50-foot lots, we have about 80 of them that we're hopefully going to build on in this area. And we ran into a little issue where we had to request a variance on the width of the house that we had already bought, paid for, and designed to build out here. Luckily, we were given the variance on it, and now we're trying to hopefully get all these where we don't have to request variances anymore.
What company are you with?
I'm a Suarez Construction Group, but the owner of the property is Oakwood Developers.
So, the lots that you printed there, what, 59 or 100?
Correct. Or 50 by, it's 150, I believe. It's 150 or 150.
And so, what was the diameter to the ground?
We were given five-foot side easements. So, the width of the home could be up to 40 feet wide. And it was supposed to have been 10, apparently. And when we met with the city, the public worked, so we were told that we could go up to, the side build lines were five feet. And that's basically it. If we don't, if we don't get a variance on it or an amendment to it, then we're going to have to request this variance every time we build or permit it. If not, we have to scrap everything and go back.
I mean, what's the amount?
Close to 80. Is it 80, Josh?
Right at 80.
Right at 80.
All in Glen Park.
Okay.
Any questions?
Not at this time. It's a public hearing, but I mean, I'll get into kind of what necessitated the consideration of something like this legislatively versus you having to go back to the board of adjustment every time.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any others? Anyone else?
Excuse me, ma'am. That could be with South.
That's what?
South Cleveland Water. These are South Cleveland Water.
Okay.
Number one. I'm sorry, I thought you started at 6:15.
I know, girl. We've already had comments. We'll go back to number one, the public hearing.
You could all, I mean, you don't mean reopen the public hearing, but if you'd like to entertain a comment as a relation to that specific issue.
You have a.
No, sir, I was just here if y'all had any questions or anything.
Okay.
Like I said, I'm sorry, I noticed I got sent 6:15. Yeah.
All right. Well, anyone else have a comment?
Anybody else online?
Stay there. Okay. We'll close the public hearing then. Okay, next item, consideration and possible action to issue a final report recommendation to city council on the application for specific use permit for the above listed parcel for South Cleveland Water to build a water plant to expand the service capacity of the CCN 12566. And I think that if anyone could comment, if it is.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to kind of give you some background. Y'all may recall that at the last meeting, we brought to you the creation of a specific use permit process for water plants and waste outcomes. This really necessitated that, or it started that process, but it makes sense for that process to be in place. And this being the first time that we've had a non-municipal entity providing water for the city, and it's not providing water for Cleveland, obviously, they just happen to have some property that will benefit their customer south of this site that's in our corporate limits. So, tonight, the purpose of this is to seek permission or a recommendation from the zoning commission to move forward to council to permit this type of use, which is a water plant on this side. And it's as simple as that. Now, you can, if you look at the ordinance, it's fairly broad. There are attachments which kind of identify where the tract is located, a general site plan, but you do have some discretion to impose other conditions. I've talked to staff about this. At this time, we don't see the need to impose specific conditions as related to the sites because it's kind of out in the middle of nowhere. But just for future reference, if you get another one of these permits in front of you and you're concerned about maybe an adjacent residential use or something of that nature, it gives you a little flexibility to impose setbacks requirements, additional setbacks, screening, things of that nature, and why that additional thing is in there. At this time, staff's not recommending that you add any other conditions other than the ones, the site plan and the identifying characteristics they put in the application, which are in the, I believe, is that correct, Angela? It's in the?
Yes, it's in the agenda package. The ordinance you received tonight, the attachments are in your agenda package.
Okay. And I notice we had some people come in. Are y'all here on the public hearing or, okay, we closed the public hearing, but we'd be happy to hear any comments you'd like to make or if you have any.
My letter says 6:15.
It's fine. I think.
I have.
Absolutely entertained. I mean, in fact, if people come in at 6:15 and even shortly thereafter, it's absolutely fine to let them talk, not only to the public hearing, but the action item itself, so long as they have.
Do you have some comments to make? Or questions to ask?
Absolutely.
All right. Come on up and.
I say that you want me over there.
Yes, ma'am. I'm loud here.
Oh, no, I teach school. I'm loud enough to hear. I live, my name is Fran Van Waring, and I live directly across this road from where the water plant's wanting to go in. My largest concern is the flooding. If you are familiar with that area, which I am, I've lived there since I was eight, and that's been almost 53 years ago. So, I've lived there a long time. Unfortunately, when the bypass came in, it caused flooding right where we are. My concern is, we've had a hard time already with that issue because, as I think my neighbor can explain probably better than I am because he's more versed in that kind of thing, the bypass, when it was put in, the drainage ditches is what I'm going to call them, the culverts that go under the bypass that drain into the, I'm going to call it a retention pond, lake that sits on the other side of the bypass from where the water plant would be. There were no trees or anything that was put on the side of the bypass to hold down the soil, so therefore, there was tons of erosion. I know, because he made me walk it. And if you were ever to go down and walk the side of the bypass, there's a ton of erosion that filled up the culverts. Therefore, it cannot drain into the retention pond, causing our properties to already flood as it is. Having lived there for forever, my concern is, I cannot imagine them spending the money to put in a water plant and not building up that property because it floods already. I mean, it's wet over there, so I'm sure they're going to build it up, giving even less drainage because that's the way it's always drained in the past. I understand we have to move forward and things change, but because of the way it's been done, there is no drainage over there. I know it used to drain over there because his property is right next to mine, which is still across the street from where the water plant wants to go. And there is a culvert that runs underneath the road, which is where it used to drain from our side to the other side and out into that area. With the bypass, it no longer drains like that. And since there's nowhere for it to run down the culverts into the lake, we get the backup. And unfortunately, to me, and no offense, but it's not out in the middle of nowhere. I can get to Walmart in three minutes, so it's not that far out of town. And I'm sure sooner or later, we're going to talk about annexing, then becomes the city's problem. We have tried, ever since the bypass has been in there, to rectify the problem. However, because it's not county property, the bypass is state. The county has tried, and I know they've tried contacting the state, but not having it, they can't touch it without the state's permission. State's not agreed to that, so to speak, but the state's yet to do anything either. And the concern is, with that being built up, it's going to make it even worse. And even out in the middle of nowhere, if you're not familiar with New Salem, you should drive it because it is a, if you've lived here any length of time, I'm sure you've driven down the Salem Road, or County Road 318, whatever you would like to call it. It is quite heavily traveled. The road also veers just a little bit as you get to where our property is, which has caused several wrecks. I could count probably at least five that I've seen in my time living there in front of my house because people don't pay attention to stuff. That's just going to add to it. It's not a place where it needs to flood because of the structure of the road and the way it veers off to the side. And I just have a very big concern that unless that drainage is addressed, it's going to be a problem not only for us, but eventually for them. I don't know if you're aware of that, but it's been quite an issue, but that issue has only been since the bypasses been in. I think that's it. Other than the skiers are really bad and sitting there. And the bad thing, I mean, on my side of the ditch, my ditch has still got quite a bit of water in it, and I have a pretty deep ditch. When it floods, it floods my entire yard. My ditch, it runs across into that side of the street. That side of the street won't even be halfway full of the ditch. Something needs to be addressed to fix that issue, or it's going to be even more of a problem. And if the city ends up annexing it at some point, which fortunately, I'm sure they were planning on, it's going to become a city problem. Okay, I'm done.
So, your concern, if summarized, is that the water plant may elevate there and further cause more flooding up here?
Of our properties and more of a danger on that road because you're welcome to come and sit out there anytime because anytime the highway patrol comes out there, I promise you, he's writing tickets. The speed limit is 35, and it has been for quite a while now. People do not drive 35 down that road, and I know that's not necessarily your issue. However, people driving fast, and lots of people use that, it's a quick, easy way without hitting the bypass to cut through from Tarkington. You're nodding because obviously you know what I'm talking about. You've traveled the country. It is well-traveled, and it just is going to become an issue for all the people that travel the road, not just myself. I mean, I know I'm the one that lives, you know, there's only a few of us that live within 200 feet of the water plant, but it is well-traveled road, a lot of traffic on that road at all times. And so, yes, sir, it is a concern that not only with them building up, and they're going to, they have to build up. There's no way they're building something over there without elevating it some, which is only going to cause more problems.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Yes, sir.
Mr. McKee, would you like to address and maybe explain what you're going to have over there and whether there will be some buildup, exacerbate flooding?
We haven't done studies of the land yet to say whether there'll be buildup or whether there won't before we build the plant. But what we're planning on building over there is not a full water plant. We are planning on building a well over there to support our water plant that exists already on County Road 320. So, what you'd see is a well, that's some equipment, and probably, I don't even know that there'd be a tank over there. So, I'm not sure what exactly until we get the engineering studies done that would be possible, but our intention was not to have to build it up. And if it's an area that's really prone to flooding, like the lady says, and I'm sure she knows she lives there, it may not even be viable for us at that point. So, you know, we'd have to do some more studies on that, but those are really good points that she raised. And that's it. All I know, my engineer will be here at your next meeting. He wasn't able to be here for this one.
Can I ask someone to ask a question, please?
Give me just a second. The, I think staff is recommending that we add, you know, if you can see in your proposal, there's additional conditions or stipulations you can add. Most cities, I'm not sure Cleveland does or not, I'm just a lawyer, I don't do the engineering stuff, but have a zero-nut fill requirement where they can't allow displacement of water greater than what's on there. So, I would suggest that you add a condition that says that they'll add additional flood mitigation to either additional retention or when it comes to zero-nut fill, those kind of things. And we, we're not going to solve that tonight regardless of engineers being here. So, I think it makes a lot of sense, if you're going to make a recommendation to push this down the road, that you have the condition that staff get with the engineers, our engineers get with their engineers, and look at that particular issue. And if there is any additional sheet flow, they're not maintaining the water they're supposed to by building up or otherwise, that they plan some additional retention on site, there's plenty of land on the property. And I would think, you know, tell me what y'all think, but I mean, it just seems like she even just raised the question, her engineers are continuing to look at it now, would it not be smart instead of making any type of recommendation? If there's a question in their mind, they're not going to pursue, should we wait till they're confident? Well, I'll leave that to the advocate, whether or not they want to continue to pursue. I think it's a carbon force problem. They don't want to spend a bunch of money on engineering without some at least understanding of permission to move forward. So, I think adding this condition forces the issue to the table, and they'll make a decision during that process whether they can actually build out this site and meet that condition. Have you seen those conditions as pretty standard in other cities? Very much so, especially in southeast Texas. And y'all are a little higher in elevation than, you know, the Houston area, but you still have flooding problems, especially on that side like she's talking about by bypass. So, it's prone to flooding.
Is that going to be written into their ordinance?
I prefer it would be, yes. It's part of your recommendation. In fact, I think your first condition to make that stipulation is additional flood mitigation, drainage plan to address flooding concerns, and have the engineers help to make sure that there's no additional water runoff from this site and zero-nut fill.
Which we can add as part of the stipulation. Okay.
I'd like to ask a question of the lady that spoke earlier, is that you?
Come on up to the mic and give us a nice.
I have a question and a comment. So, we have that house next to the McCorries.
What's your name?
Parrish.
Parrish.
And we've been there 50, 50 years, and it's high, Richard, and it's never flooded until about two years ago. The flooding has gotten awful out there. If it rains a little bit, there's nowhere for the water to go since the bypass has been put in. So, you've got a real water out issue out there already. If you put something across the street, it's going to get even worse. But my other, the question I have, is there going to be any kind of privacy or noise barrier? Isn't there going to be like a pumping, something happening other than just water storage?
There's, there will be an engineer, but they don't make a lot of noise. The biggest noise would be if the generator has to kick on to support it, your generator.
So, will there be any kind of privacy fence going up around this or noise barrier or anything?
No.
So, we're just going to be looking at this, sitting there? I mean, that's really a pretty small sliver right on this side of the bypass.
Well, it's six acres, but if you've ever driven by any of our other plants, there's one on 320 and there's one on 321.
Yeah.
And you're welcome to drive by.
And is there anything around it that blocks the view?
No, it's a chain link fence around it.
Okay, so what do we, I couldn't, I looked at the drawing. I didn't get this for some reason. Somebody told me about this. I didn't get the letter, but I saw the drawing. It looks like a lot more there than just a storage tank.
No, it wouldn't be a water well.
But isn't it like a three to five-year plan where you're going to build that out?
No, that's not.
Okay. That's not what was in the letter that was sent out. There was, if I were still writing. So, no? So, there's just a storage tank for water there? That's all you're proposing?
It's actually a well, I'm not considering any storage.
Okay.
But you're also losing, you're also gaining more noise from the bypass attack once all the trees are gone.
Yeah.
In light of these comments, I mean, again, those are things and why we have this opening in additional conditions section of car disordinance and the purpose of these hearings and your recommendation to council. Well, you could add or require them to add screen from adjacent residential properties, even sound or noise barriers around the generator or anything else that makes noise as an additional condition.
Okay. Come on up, sir.
Yeah, I live over on the west side.
What's your name?
Robert Parrish, Bob Parrish.
Okay.
Own all the property on the west side, which I live in at 6 acres. I guess I'm late, I thought it was 6:30, but I assume you're going to put, looking at putting a water well there?
Well, we're not. The South Cleveland Water District is going to put the well in, not the city of Cleveland.
Okay.
But they're in our ETJ, which means that the city of Cleveland has to approve. That's my understanding.
Corporate, they're in the city.
Time, so it's in the city.
It's just at the edge.
But it's not the city of Cleveland, but well.
Well, they should be aware of that. I mean, the meld of that was three and a half, four feet underwater, and Harvey was over two feet underwater. Meld of my house flooded. Nothing there's ever flooded before. But since the highway department built that big dam around the southeast side, it has one culvert right there about where they're looking at putting a water well. But I mean, all of that goes underwater. I mean, I got really concerned if they're going to do anything, I mean. So, problem with the water now is we've never had before until it goes to highway. And I've been on the highway department, and so far, all I've got is where we're going. And I'm going to go ahead and contact the Harvey Corrors Engineers and FEMA because they had claims, floodwater claims, and I just, I didn't know what they were going to put there, but if they're going to put anything there, there has to be something about water. Unless you want the well to go underwater, I mean, before it gets approved or anything, that whole tract goes underwater.
I think the lady with the Water District gets said they haven't done the engineering on that yet, so that's.
I have one more quick question. Y'all, y'all said, yes, it's in the city limits. Where she's at or where they're wanting to build the well is in the city limits, but our property is not in the city limits.
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay. I just want to be sure I was.
Yes, ma'am. You and I spoke about that.
Yes, ma'am. I remember. I wrote it on my map. That's what I was showing her. I wrote that on my map. She said, that's weird. And I said, no, ma'am, I wrote it down because I wouldn't forget.
Right. Your property is not in the city limits, just her property.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Just one clarification. Thank you.
Come on up, sir.
Hi, I'm Richard Mansky. Fran's better have, regardless of what she tells you. The problem is she's talking about the road. The road veers off. We've seen at least, I've seen at least four cars in that ditch flipped over because of the water. And here's the thing, you got the county saying it's the state, the state saying it's the county. Everybody's saying everything, but nobody's fixing nothing. I personally, two weeks ago, I got a three-inch pump, put in my ditch to pump the water to the other side of the street, regardless of how many people got squirted with the hose because they were flying down that road. Okay? There lies the problem. When the property floods, half the road is flooded, and then you got two idiots going 80 miles an hour down the street at each other. So, there's the issue. But yes, that, those, those issues about the flood, somebody should get with the state. State with the county, but both of them have told me to my face on the phone within two weeks ago that it's not our problem, we can't do nothing about it. So, who can?
We appreciate your comments. An issue here is not, not really the flooding issue, I guess it's just whether or not we recommend to the city of Cleveland to allow them to dig a well. And so, flooding issue is not something we deal with.
But anything you put more dirt on.
Well, and that's what the issue has come up. We're going to put in there that if they elevate that land any to accommodate that well, they either have to have a detention or retention pond, or do some flood, what do you call it?
Remediation.
Remediation. To where they won't throw any more water from you.
And I understand that, but who protects the citizens that are there if their little plan doesn't work? Like the state said, that, you know, we wouldn't have flooding now.
If their little plan doesn't work, like the state said that, you know, we wouldn't have flooding now, but the bypass is there, everybody that never flooded is flooding. Even over on the Plum Grove Road, they're flooding. So what are they going to do at that point if everybody's house starts flooding away? It'd be too late then?
All right. Anyone else?
I have no question. Because I don't know if I understand what's going on exactly. So across the street, that property is in the city limits? Yes, already? Or you're trying to decide whether to put it within the city limits? It's already in the city limits?
It's proposed property.
So what they're asking for is a permit to put, like-
A well.
A well. That requires city council's permission.
Well, currently, that's a zoning request, the change for a specialty use permit.
Okay, okay. Because I really think that what you have to consider is the impact on all of us in this area, whether we're in the city limits or not. And I think what you're hearing us all say is we're anticipating a negative impact from this. So I just want to be very clear what we're saying. We're not just asking you to do something about the flooding. We're saying this is an issue that's about to get worse. I don't believe this is going to make the situation better. I think it's going to make the situation out there worse. So I want to be really clear what I think we're all trying to say to you. We've got a problem that we anticipate getting worse if you approve this.
Well, again, well, we can rise into the ordinance that any elevation of their land, which will throw more water on you, has to be addressed so that you won't be negatively impacted. Go ahead, Mr. K.
Just for clarification, and I'm with South Cleveland Water Supply Corporation. Just for clarification, the area that we're talking about is part of our certificate of convenience and necessity, which basically, if you're not familiar with that, it's kind of like a territory that the state assigns to water utilities. So it was always part of our certificate of convenience and necessity ever since we've been around, since probably the seventies. And so during that time, the city annexed that part of the area. And so what we did is our engineer that we have on staff just took, almost like a big pencil, and made a circle to support our water district. What area would we need to build a plant in to support our existing pump? And so that's kind of how we found this area. We searched out what land was available. We have not done an engineering study yet because we wanted to make sure that we could even build on it before we spent the money to do an engineering study. So I just didn't want you to think that we were being irresponsible and that we didn't know. We haven't done a full engineering study on the land. A lot would have to go into it. We're a very picky kind of water district. We're, we have superior water rating and we have source water protection programs in place. And we work really hard with the state and the government officials to make sure that we don't ever lose our superior rating. So we would make sure that everything was good. But having said that, there's a lot of things that would have to go into place. If the land floods and is underwater, you know, three or four feet, chances are we couldn't even build a water plant there or a water well there. So those are some things that we'd have to consider. So I do appreciate all the comments I'm hearing here today. But I just didn't want you to think that we had plans to just go ahead and do it without the proper studies and knowing what's happening. Once we get approval, then we would go in and do, and it's not approval like they would say, contingent upon certain things, like we'd have to have retention ponds and things like that to make sure it doesn't impact the people around us. But we can't go forward with the engineering study until the city approves us doing something out there. So that's kind of where we're at right now. We haven't done anything to start the project or make it go forward or anything until this step is done. So does that make it a little more clear to somebody?
Can I ask you more?
Sure, yeah.
So you're digging a well, my friend, correct?
That's what we would do.
Yes, ma'am. That's what we're proposing. So I'm definitely not an engineer, obviously, and features-
And I'm not either.
And I did math so it has nothing to do with this. So if you do build a well over there, I still have well water. What's that going to do to my well water?
It doesn't do anything to your well water. We have a lot of residents that have private wells and then also residents right next to them who have city services.
Okay, I just had asked. I made it here on the subject.
Yes, way, way deep.
So can I ask you a question? So this is what I was referring to with my thought, which I think is about your website. This looks like buildings to me. It says controlled building, but it's not just a well. It looks like a control building.
Well, there's a building there because, gee, I'm kind of getting put in a house or something and that's where they check the levels of the chlorine and things like that and going in the water. Those are probably tied, yeah. So, and we're buying six acres, so there's probably something in there that says eat your plant. They just aren't using demands, they've got that in there.
So that's what I just, it all came quite the same.
It could, but right now what we're doing is we're, and it would have to go back and get rezoned or get whatever if that ever happens. But what we're doing right now is we're just building, proposing building a well to support existing.
So all you're approving is the building of the well? They've got to come back to you to do anything else?
We're not even approving that.
You're approving?
We're just a zoning commission that will make a recommendation to the city of Cleveland to hold up another, before anything can be done, they'll hold another public hearing.
Okay.
But what she's saying is that before they'll proceed with the engineering report and what have you, they have to know that the city would be receptive to allowing them to dig a well on that land before they can even move forward.
Okay.
I don't know much of engineering report about it.
That would be at the next public hearing or is this one that we're-
Will they have the report, the engineering report?
Yeah.
I'm sure that we can make that a requirement.
Not by the twenty-first, that's what you're asking.
Ma'am?
I don't think I'd have an engineering report by next week, it's twenty-first this month.
The engineering report will be part of the petition for one hundred million, even if the city council threw it.
And we haven't even purchased the land yet. We don't own the land.
That's what I was thinking, ask, who owns the land?
Uh, Ms. Dolly Martin and her sister.
That's why I pulled it up on the tax assessment, the taxes.
Yes, yes.
Right, because I pulled it up, I figured that might have been pulling, well, they have some place. What wrong with you? I mean, it's-
Yes, sir.
My name's Tracy Parrish, and I'm not across the street. My sister's right here. The problem you got with that, that area isn't serving as a detention bond right now. It ain't doing no good, but all that stays underwater. When they put the bypass in, they put the culverts in, it's the wrong elevation. I've shot it, they're way out of way. All the erosion on the bypass has got the culverts blocked up, water builds up. It's got to go all the way to Plum Grove Road to get out. What they're talking about putting in, unless they put in access off the bypass, they're going to put in another dam. And even if they move it where it ain't affecting us directly, it'll be damming him up. And there's multiple houses down in there, except me and Teas on the flood out. It'll have to back up, go all the way to Plum Grove. They're talking about putting a shitty pond in there. They'd have to put the whole place in a detention pond. They'd have to put a lift station in. That's the only way they're going to keep water off everybody. They put a lift station in, they're going to have to pipe it to Plum Grove unless they can get approval through the state to shoot it across the bypass. I was born and raised there. I used to clean that ditch out. All of city of Cleveland comes through our property and they've diverted bits and pieces off of it over the years. Runs right by the house, goes through them culverts. Used to run it straight out there into a flat and dissipate. I used to clean that ditch out through them woods. Before I did it, my father did it. I'm sure real Bob and his father did it. That's why I kept all of it running. Something else the issue here is you put a commercial facility in a crossover. The property value is going downhill. So you're pretty much taking away the cost of our property, not just ours, his, hers, few others. I've got another cousin that's got a property there. She ain't here tonight, she lives out of town. One more issue. The bit about the well, what depth is it going to be? Okay. I've done construction all my life, oil and gas, drilling, playing pipelines. I've done drainage, I've done utility, I've done road construction. That place has been sized and grepped out there and even then, it wasn't going to mess up no water wells. They got through, everybody's well around there sanded up. You put in a well, unless you're down far deep enough to get below the cores, you're going to have issues with private water wells.
I hear what you're saying, and I assume it's a commercial well like the city of Cleveland digs. Is that not right?
Yes.
Which goes below, three thousand feet down.
How far? How far?
Uh, how far is that well?
I don't want to assume, but it's a, it's a CCN. So there's certain requirements that they're going to have to meet as a commercial well. Remember, this is not a city well. This is the CCN, the South Cleveland Water District.
I think it's about sixteen hundred feet is where they go.
It's over a thousand feet. I know it's a little over a hill, I don't know where it's going.
You're going to have issues.
Those are the dog.
Well, I don't know.
It's around sixteen hundred feet. Plum Grove Road here.
Thank you for your comments, I appreciate it. Anyone else? Any other comment? Now, our issue today is not, you know, flood remediation or, you know, I hear what everyone's saying. The only thing we're doing today is discussing, recommending that the city allow variance in our ordinance to allow them to put a commercial well over there. Is that correct, Mr. K?
Sort of.
Tell us exactly what we're doing.
It's not a, it's not a variance, but they don't have a right. Our zoning rules are put in place to give districts buildable, residential districts for single family, commercial districts for commercial buildings. And right now, there's nothing in our zoning ordinance that would permit a water well. However, they do have a CCN. They have certain rights, and of course, with the state, to provide water for the people in their district. So I think the purpose of this and why we put the specific use permit in place is to give the city at least some control. Otherwise, we don't even have a dog in the fight. But from what I'm hearing right now, it sounds like if you're going to make a recommendation, whether it's positive or negative, that you would like the staff to address the two issues that were raised. One is flood mitigation, zero net fill, and screening, noise, and visual buffering. And I think-
Maybe get some information in reference to what he's talking about.
That'll all go towards the engineering side of things because they're going to have to do a drainage study. TCQ is going to require it, even if we don't.
Well, beyond the drainage study, he's saying that digging-
That'll be part of their application process with TCQ.
Their water wells that are probably three hundred feet or whatever.
I'm not saying the state knows what the hell they're doing all the time, but that is part of their application process for them to get a permit to drill the well. Anyway, we do that at the city level. To address those types of issues. But we as a city really don't have jurisdiction over the approval or non-approval of those types of issues. That's a state issue. What you can consider is more, if you think of zoning ordinances and what they do, setbacks and screening and height requirements and size and those kind of things. So putting your zoning cap on as a zoning commission, because again, it's not a variance. We're just, they don't have, as a matter of right, to build a water plant without having to go through a different process to circumvent the city's authority. But for now, if you're going to make a recommendation, it can be that you recommend that council does not allow a specific use permit for this purpose. Or they do allow with conditions. Either way, it's going to city council next.
Okay. Anybody have a question for the attorney? Any more comments, public comments from the, from the public? All right, we'll close the public hearing. And I guess we'll discuss, you know, I certainly would like to see the citizens concerned addressed before I would make a recommendation to the city. As to, I mean, if I live there, I would certainly have concerns. I know that we can address the concern with flooding by making sure that there's there's no addition of water thrown. I don't mean we can't do any flood remediation and can't, don't have any control over that. But we can make sure that our recommendation to the city be that that they cause no damage by their, by digging a well or putting a well there. That's my understanding.
I absolutely agree. And I don't know anything about wells at all. So I would definitely say that if we went forward with keeping it down to the council that you all would not harm any of that. I've never even thought about wells and how they sit. I don't know anything about that. But even if that is a problem, a potential problem, that there will, I mean, I don't know. So making sure the engineers address that issue or in some type of way would be my perspective. I don't know how to phrase that. I've got to play this, but the bottom line is making sure that we perceive that you all not harming any of that.
And I agree also, and I, it sounds like, and we've all heard these stories, and I just, I hate it for our community and I hate it for our area that some of the drainage and things that are happening out there because of certain constructions and impacting. We just, we have, we're talking about something very specific. I think that we have in our recommendation oversight to put in stipulations to make sure that this doesn't add to or make any of your problems worse. I think that's where we have to go. I think that is one of the things we're angry at. Unfortunately, Mr. Bender, we can't, we don't have any authority on fixing what happened with the bypass. So I think we're all on the same line thinking that. And I think the stipulations that we're talking about are related to flood mitigation, zero net fill, along with the noise and screening.
Yeah, and I came up solely because when you say harmed in any way is so broad. One gentleman said, you know, it's going to decrease its property value. Well, there's going to be, if they, if they move forward and council grants them the authority through a specific use permit to do this with these conditions, and a structure does exist with screening, flood mitigation, and all the stuff that you're talking about, he in his mind may still, just like I would, if I had to look across the street and see that and consider that to be harmful. So I want y'all to be direct in your conditions. But I think the two that you've mentioned are the two that have been brought up so far. The property value thing, we really can't, we're not in a legal position to address that. But those other two, I think we at the staff level can require their engineers to address.
And also make sure we're clear about the way, I don't know if that's a real piece of a policy.
What do you mean by that?
He said something about the fact that-
Oh, the depth and the seismic?
Or he's concerned being that the new well has collapsed their will, so making sure that if that is a potential, that that is addressed.
I'm not sure I fully understood.
Typically, they have a well four inches a mile from there. I mean, from my house, right there beside us, a plus mark. And that well, when they dug it, because I was living out, I lived there all my life, it's sixteen hundred feet deep about, somewhere I remember I'm delivering. My wife at the time kept the water district, she did all of them, dug it. So I kept, and Monica was being good. And he was one of the ones that commanded the start of South Cleveland. That well is about sixteen hundred feet, if I remember correctly. And that's not going to impact any wells out there. Most wells there are either going with water, it's going to be at about a hundred and thirty feet or four hundred and sixty feet. I mean, just so everybody knows that when you, when you go down, you're talking to dead rock, you're down into sixteen hundred feet, a whole different strategy, why?
Thank you.
Did you hear what you just said?
I know, I was-
I will add to that and say that those kind of- I will add to that and say that those kind of assessments aren't done at our level anyways.
Yes.
That's all done through TCQ and the permitting process for the well. So, uh, we're somewhat preempted from those kind of determinations.
Okay, well, entertain a motion or a recommendation, uh, for me to, or make a motion.
I, I'm making a motion that we, uh, recommend, uh, to go forward with these stipulations put in place. Stipulations of the zero net fill, flood mitigation, noise and screening boundaries.
I think that's fair. And it's really, you're, you're talking about approving the ordinance as written with the addition of those two stipulations.
Addition and stimulation.
Okay.
Yeah, noise and screening.
It, noise and visual screening. So really, those four conditions.
Okay. Got a motion and a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Hold both. Okay, the motion's carried. Move forward, uh, with the recommendation that the city, with the stipulations in the ordinance. Okay, we'll move on to number five. Uh, consideration and possible action to issue file report recommendation to city council for an ordinance, ending the city's comprehensive plan and approving modified setbacks for non-conforming lots.
Uh, just like the gentleman spoke earlier, really, this was brought up and, and often these kind of issues are brought up through the zoning work adjustment process. When we see a pattern of people coming in and asking for the same things, it's a, it kind of raises a red flag at the staff level that we need to address this legislatively. It's really not appropriate for him to come in and request a, a, a board of adjustment, adjustment just because council hasn't addressed a deviation. Talking, we did talk to council about this. They were in agreement that y'all needed to take a look at it. And it's pretty straightforward in the ordinance. What we are saying is we're going to recognize all non-conforming lots in the city. Not only those in Glen Parks, uh, Tanglewood, and I think there's some lots scattered throughout the city. They're smaller than the required seventy-five hundred square feet. Uh, the rule now says it has to be seventy-five feet on, on the front building line as well. So what this ordinance says is if you have a lot that's smaller than that or you have a lot that is less than seventy-five feet in the front, that you get a reduced side yard setback from ten to five feet and a reduced rear yard setback to five feet or seven feet if it's encumbered in part by a utility. And you're not hamstrung necessarily with the seventy-five hundred or the seventy-five feet. You could, if you felt that that was too open-ended, meaning that if somebody came in, because the unintended consequences of something, something like this is if there's a lot that's seventy-four feet in width, that building line, they get to come in and put a five-foot, uh, side yard setback. So, uh, without getting into the intricacies of a sliding scale, I think it makes a lot of sense that we start here because we, I don't think we see a lot of the in-between seventy-five and fifty. We just happen to have some neighborhoods that were built at fifty and they are stuck with these larger setbacks. And as a practical matter, it's harder for a developer to come in and rationalize a bill of that nature to make any money. They just can't build a big enough house in that small lawn with our side yard setbacks and rear yard setbacks.
So let me make sure I understand that right. Um, you've got a lot of the lot in precinct twenty are fifty-five hundred.
Okay.
So currently, you're saying that they have to have ten feet on the side?
Correct.
So which means if the house would be about thirty foot in width.
About this length of this, a little further in this dive.
Okay, so under this ordinance, we're expanding that to, to reduce that variance to five feet.
It's not really a variance, it's a legislative right at this point where if you have that fifty-five hundred, you have the right then to come in and apply for a billing permit at five yard side, side yard setbacks. So you could build a forty-foot house instead of a thirty-foot house.
Okay.
And, and for this one, it's a little more specific than the prior one. There isn't built-in ambiguous potential conditions. The only thing really for consideration is, do you like the idea, first of all? And two is, are you okay with leaving it for all non-conforming lots? Anything that's under seventy-five hundred or seventy-five feet or whatever. I don't think, and Bobby, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think there's a lot of the in-between type of lot.
There's not, just, but also-
My next question. How many of these are there?
Well, a lot of, most of it is in Glen Park, like precinct twenty. And I think Tanglewood is part of that, I'm not sure.
There's a hundred, hundred to two hundred probably lots.
Correct.
Total, and we don't see a lot of sixty-foot lots or fifty-five foot lots. It's, it's, it's pretty black and white. And if somebody come in now to subdivide property, couldn't make a fifty-foot lot. They'd have to make it seventy-five feet. So we're not going to have additional problems down the road. We're just addressing these smaller lots that were already there. They're legally non-conforming lots. We can't force somebody to go in and make a, their lot bigger.
How big are the lots out there at the new subdivision in, uh, what's the name of it?
The L G Y?
Yeah, one on Foster Road.
I, I think they're, they are smaller too, but because they're in a, uh, special, uh-
They're a P U D.
P U D.
There is a mechanism for us, and, but the beauty of doing a planning unit development that they're talking about is they come in and say, we like smaller lots. But then, okay, we'll give you a little bit of leeway here, but we're going to ask for a greater setback. So they, they're not entitled to that by right, five-foot lesser setback. They are contractually obligated to build with a setback that was negotiated by the house. Correct.
Staff supports this idea, but I also wanted to just remind you on these, these, uh, lots that don't have a lot of frontage. You might have a situation where a house is about ten feet apart, which is pretty normal these days, but this is, instead of being twenty feet apart, side to side, they're going to be ten feet apart.
Correct.
But it does give the property owner a little bit of a lot.
And again, this is only, I mean, really in single family. We have, we have lesser side yard setbacks and, and higher density single, our family in, in other districts. But, um, and I think this is somewhere in between and why we thought it made sense to allow at least a slight relaxing of the setback room for smaller lots.
And we also think that this would help develop, partly in Glen Park.
Having this stipulation in here, I mean, having this written, this ought to be more attractive to developers, obviously, with certain-
Well, absolutely, you get a higher-end house. Because the, the price of dirt out there just doesn't justify it.
So I might have to understand you're, you're all with, on board with this?
Yes.
You're on board?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll make the recommendation or the motion, uh-
It was the same, it's the, like, the sixteen twenty, the way the lot's up, up there. Somehow that has to go long way, you just angle it, make a front, a house sit there.
That would have to go long way, but they should give them a little bit of relief on the side. So they don't have any, it'd be like home town, the row house, double back and like, like we have a rule to read. Now, the rules are written for semi-mountain front building. But our lot's out there enough. But, but we're going to get into this at the council.
That's why I'm holding on to you right now.
Well, I mean, it's a legitimate question.
Did you make a motion to?
I might propose, I might, I might recommend that I should put it to city council. Through. Yes. Motion is second. We're obviously in favor of you. Okay. All right, uh, next is establish a day for the upcoming zoning commission public hearing meeting.
Yes, I just want to make certain, we're going to do a, a joint public hearing, um, for our next issue. And we're wanting to do that at our July city council meeting, which will be the third Tuesday in the month of, and I'm looking at my calendar. It will be the twentieth of July. Uh, that is going to be just to fix our zoning map. Uh, right now, it's, I don't need to get into it, I just, I need to establish the date, right?
Correct.
So is, if everyone is good, um, and I have a quorum, I would like to make certain that you're good with July the twentieth. Um, and that way, it will be the public hearing for both zoning and the city council at the same time. And then y'all will leave, just like you normally do, do your deliberation and come back and council will take action. Um, is everyone good with July twentieth, so I can have a quorum?
I'm good. Yeah, I'm good.
Awesome.
More questions?
Uh, it'll be at six P M., just the regular council meeting, and on July the twentieth.
Okay. No action necessary on that, other than information. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Is that a motion we adjourn?
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye. All right. Meeting adjourned.